This meeting, the Fayette County Commissioners' order, to start a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will, we will give a minute for the last meeting prepared, and we'll leave them to the, to the next meeting. We'll have our department head reports. Mr. Havlin, Highway Department?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
We've been mainly trying to trim trees and mow grass and spray patching roads. Still replacing cans, I think we've got two more to do. I think we've replaced almost thirty of them so far since the first year. And I know there's more out there, we just have to restock and keep hunting. I've checked on the chip seal and with what we're spray patching and what we had in our budget for this year, we'll have enough left to do seven and a half miles of road in each district for this year. And that's, that's gonna be, it's gonna be, I picked some roads out that I know really need it and I'm still looking because they're out there and we need to do the worst roads to try to save them or you're gonna lose them. And I've got something that really broke up and for some reason the trees are really, trees dripping on the roads are really heating them up for some reason. I don't know whether it's because they're walling it, trees or what, but there's spots out there fully bad. But we will, we will probably start next week if with the weather latches and work up now then during the fair weekend we won't do it and they'll pick it up after that. But we'll have a pretty good plan where we're going. I know there was a piece in the paper that said we wanted to do the chip sealing program and I went back and checked the annual reports all the way back to 2005, 2006 and we've done more since I started every year than they did back then. And it's about ten miles more every year. So that, I don't know where they're getting their information at, but it's all false. We're gonna be a little short this year because they took a hundred thousand off our budget. It's just the way things felt. And we've got, I've got a man coming on the, the new trucks, the plows on them are wearing real strange. I've been in contact with them since, since we plowed snow when I seen what they were doing. And they sent us parts to fix one and I think it was just a miscommunication. And when I got the parts for this new truck, I checked them and they're not gonna work because they're too soft metal. And that's what's happening to the new plows.
You're talking about the blade on the bottom of it?
No, I'm talking about the, on our plows, we've got a plow frame that the plow rides up and down on. It's got pins that stick out the locking in place and the pins are wearing it half. And I've got a truck that is an eighty-seven and it ain't got no wear on it at all. It's not had, does not have any wear on it and it was used to dickens until the last three or four years.
The pins are wearing and the frames are wearing.
The pins are wearing, the locking in place, there's, there's metal's too soft. And that, that's what I get from Coffin Burgers down in Cincinnati. But they're getting the plow people to come up on August the fourth, they'll be up there to look at it. So whoever comes down and takes my place, I'll make sure they get all the information on it and they can continue on from there. And I've got, on our sand boxes, I've got two that I ordered to replace and I've got one being repaired, so they'll be ready for the wear for the V-box. So, so we've got money for them, so as soon as they get them, they can put them in the trucks. And that's, that's all I have.
Thanks. Anybody else have any questions, Jay?
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Gray?
Morning.
Morning.
They're doing the last four on the concrete out front, you can see.
Those are looking nice.
Hopefully that'll be, it'll be done today and I'll get it finished out and railing and stuff like that. I only have one other thing, I've got a air conditioning compressor out at the NX building. And I've got bids out waiting on it, prices come back. This is the air conditioner that takes care of the first floor, the old, Bill McDaniel's old office and the veterans' office.
Okay, you have it by the next meeting probably, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll have it, I'll have it by your turn.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I T Director, Ben?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
This morning I handed you a few packets. This is all one project that Kathy Rhodes from the accessory office has requested a, a new wide format printer. We currently have one in the surveyor's office, however, it is non-functional. Mike O'Keane, one of our part-timers, has been in contact with Priority Engineering, who was the company we originally purchased that machine from. They quoted a repair cost of six thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars. And so along with that, Michael was asking for quotes on new equipment. New equipment was low four thousand, so we've got three or four quotes for you. I believe the best quote comes from Miller Huggins with a installed network ready to go, three thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars. Michael's the one that did all the legwork on this, if you have any questions about the equipment, you can ask him. If you have any questions about the use of the, the use of the equipment, Kathy, if you could explain the need for it. And I apologize, I believe on the Miller Huggins quote, I attached a second page to that. That's actually a separate quote from Rose's office plus, so those are actually two separate.
So to, so to clarify what you were saying, it's gonna cost six thousand dollars to fix it, it's gonna cost three thousand to just buy a new one?
Right at four thousand by one, yeah. If not, four thousand please.
Look at these, I mean, there's a big difference between the, between the quotes on these from thirty-nine hundred to nineteen-eight. That'd be the, but this is a quality printer, this?
Yeah, the nineteen-eight one was a separate machine that he had included a bundle with a scanning function. He was trying to quote, trying to get us to go for that. I didn't think we needed it, but I didn't think it would hurt to get the quote in.
Right. But this, this little quote would do everything we needed to.
Yeah. I have to verify within writing that they really do include the install in that. I'm fairly sure it might especially with sales, but that is the case, but I want to verify to be sure.
To fund this project, Kathy has funds available in her sales disclosure fund, but would need to be, that money would need to be appropriated by council. So holding off this vote till your next meeting would not slow down the purchase process because that money's supposed to be appropriated by council. So if you wanted it writing from Miller-
Make sure about the installation.
Right, right. So, but I did want to get this in front of you as quickly as possible so you guys were aware of what was going on. And if you have any questions, like I said, Michael was our lead on this, so he can answer any questions you have about the printer, its capabilities and so forth. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
County Attorney, Chris?
Hi, nothing, nothing to discuss right now.
Okay. You got a council representative with us? No? EDG Director, Dan Parker? No. Now let's try to go along the agenda here. Mail, you got any mail for us? I, I did have one out of the mail. Tammy Dowd has sent the commissioners a letter resigning from the tourism board. So if the rest of commissioners want to think about that and or anybody wants to apply to the commissioners for that, we can take that up next, next meeting and appoint somebody to that, we need somebody on there. Okay? Old business, re-advertise for highway director position. As most of you know, we interviewed for highway supervisor. We have a problem with our starting, with our starting salary, but four of the five people that command, we're all making more money than what our starting salary is. The council has sought fit to raise the starting salary up to thirty-eight thousand dollars for the highway supervisor, which is still not near what, what the people we interviewed were making. So I'd like to advertise, re-advertise for highway director position in, in what, four, five or six days to?
I think they were in by the twenty, what did we say?
Twenty.
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Twenty-fourth, right there. The, the council is gonna have a special meeting on the twenty-fifth to discuss the highway grid, so I thought we could-
Have an executive session.
Have an executive session prior to that and not have to come down here twice to interview these people. So I would, sorry, with the other two commissioners, I would like to advertise for, for this position. State in advertisement what the salary will be and have the, have the admissions end on the twenty-fourth of this month. Yeah, let's do it. Good move, and second we do advertise for the highway supervisor's position, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. New business? Liberty National, Alex Rager?
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning.
Debbie, it's good to see you again. How are you? We brought little folders for everyone here. This is Alex, my name's David Graham. And first off, we just want to say thank you for your time and letting us present today. Debbie, thanks for meeting with us last week and allowing us to come today. We represent Liberty National Life Insurance. We're a company that's been around since nineteen-hundred in the south, we're based out of McKinney, Texas. So we, we're ancient in the south, but we're new to Indiana. We were brought in just a few short years ago by the Indiana State Insurance Commissioner. And the reason he brought us in is because he saw policies that had gaps in them. So what we are is we're a gap coverage. In just a few short years, thirty-one counties have brought us on board in over a hundred and fifty cities and towns. And the reason why is because we have merged term life and whole life, brought it together to make the best package you could possibly have. Basically, the best part of term is that it's affordable. The best part of whole life is that it doesn't end down until one hundred years old. Most people, unless, if you get in your twenties, thirties, forties, you're not gonna be buying whole life because you just can't afford it. But the best part about it is it adds cash value, which this doesn't, but it also goes to one hundred years old. So basically what this does is, if you take this out, it'll just kind of walk you through our bread and butter, what our policy is. It's the group term life that goes all the way to one hundred. Basically, it's guaranteed never to increase in premium. From the time that your employees would, would apply for the policy, not a penny will ever be added to the premium, ever. There's no conversion rates. It's fully portable, as you see. If you retire, resign or are terminated, you can take this policy with you at no additional cost whatsoever. The reason this is better than most term insurance policies is because in a typical group term insurance, it's going to end at sixty-five or seventy years old. And then what are you gonna do? You're gonna have conversion rates. You're gonna have to pay a little bit more money at the age that you really need insurance. Also, we have a policy that's, it's the exact same as the group term that goes all the way to one hundred, but you can pay it off at sixty-five. So unlike other, you know, companies that are asking for more money at sixty-five or seventy when you really need insurance, ours is completely paid off at sixty-five years old. And it's for pennies, pennies on the dollar more. We're very affordable. Qualifying is very easy, it's just nine simple questions because it's based on the group rates. It's based on the group, it's not on the individual market. And as you see, it's a pre-tax plan, so it's gonna cost the county absolutely nothing. If anything, you're gonna save money. And every employee that gets something for themselves is gonna save twenty percent because of the Section one twenty-five federal plan.
We're gonna save nothing.
Anytime that the employee through social security saves money, it's through the federal Section one twenty-five plan. So it's supplementary for you, it's, it costs nothing for you, it's supplementary. It's not major medical, it's supplementary for the employees. Now, when they save money on the Section one twenty-five plan, they're gonna save twenty percent, you also will save money because they're saving money on a pre-tax plan.
The federal tax that you match, like FICA and FUDA, that you match it with the employees' taxes. When you match the taxes with the employee, for the employee, you basically, it's a pre-tax program. Liberty National will take the money out before they tax it. So in this way, the county saves some money, employees in the same time save, save the money just for the same reason, for the, for the pre-tax program.
Yeah, okay, you pay tax on that.
We see a lot of participation on, on this one because what is happening, most of the time, you know, the employees have some, some life issues wrapped it up in their health package, but it's not portable. When they leave the employment, they retire, they cannot take it with them. With this one, the employee is the, is the owner of the policy, not the county. So basically, when they terminate, they switch jobs, they, they can take the policy with them, no conversion rate. We have a couple, I mean, we have a, a little, a little page that shows the county that we, we're doing business with them right now. It's actually-
It's on the right side of the folder.
On the yellow color. That's the main reason that we wanna, we wanna serve your employees. We do have a couple of more policy, we have a cancer treatment plan. And then we have a very affordable accidental plan, called like the employee's three dollars a week. That's, I would say, there is other company that offers something similar. We are the only company providing a term life policy going in force all the way to age one hundred, pretty much the same, the same feature like the whole life. So that's the main reason we are here, we're trying to serve your employees. And the last thing that we do for the employees, we do not advertise anywhere, we are not on the public billboard or any commercial. So we, we're gonna offer to every single employee for the county a free coverage of three thousand dollars accidental death benefit for themselves. Three thousand dollars for their spouse and a thousand dollars for each child. It's good for one year, every twelve months we're coming back and we review this for free as long as they, they work for the county, they qualify for this policy. So it's something that we give away just, just a thank you that they sit down with us and we show them what we are, what we offer them. Do you have some, any questions regarding this?
So what are you asking the commissioners?
We're asking the permission to, can speak with the employees and we can, you know.
Basically asking just for your permission to be able to speak to your employees and just let them know that there's a group term life, it goes all the way to one hundred, has no conversion rates and that's fully portable, they can take it with them wherever they go. We're just asking for your permission to be able to talk to your employees.
So you would set this plan up through the county?
Correct.
And it would cover the county employees? And I guess, my question is, what would it?
On a voluntary basis?
On a voluntary basis, for the employees to take it? So it wouldn't cost us anything?
No.
If the employees wanted it, it would cost them X, Y and Z.
It would be a payroll deduction.
Right. It would cost you nothing.
We need to have three people sign up to go to the payroll deduction. We don't, we don't see any problem on that. So basically, if you don't have, at least three people sign up, we cannot get to the payroll deduction. But we see quite a, around forty percent participation on, on, on specific this policy. People, you know, they see a value on this policy, so that's all we wanna make it available for them. At the same time, everybody qualifies for the accidental death benefit we can offer to everybody.
So it says, it says here, it says twenty-five-year-old male smoker, twenty-five thousand dollar coverage. Group term insurance would be four dollars and twenty-seven cents every week.
That, that show a different, a difference in, in between ages, based by age, of course.
It's just an example.
And then show you a difference between a whole life and a group term, which is, which is more affordable on the group term. Basically, this policy, the group term to one another, we cannot offer outside of the group. Have to be the group.
Do you require, do you, do you require a physical?
No. We have nine health question that we ask them, we ask the employees and that's all we need to qualify them for the policy.
Yeah, very easy qualifying.
We don't have a problem with the county would just be authorized in that to contact employees. We would not be endorsing the insurance company.
Probably provide, send out a memo to all department heads, for all employees and say when they'll be here for signup or whatever. And then they would set a date when they'd have like a, you know, talk to the people just like we have on our other insurance lines.
Like enrollment?
Where they could meet with, with the convenience of that shut down, or two.
Yeah, we'll, we coordinate with that, we can.
If that makes us, if we have a objection, we can make sure that all of us can do that.
I'll move that we allow the Liberty National Works Side Advantage Company to speak with our employees, that this is something that the county is making available to the employees, but not officially, we're not endorsing it, we're just allowing them to talk to our employees. Second?
Good move, and second we do allow Liberty National to contact the employees regarding their insurance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Very much, sir.
Senior Senator Transportation, Dan, is Diane here? My server. Where is everybody this morning?
I told you.
Okay. Polling place location change, Melinda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to request a motion from you to grant the change of two polling locations. Eastview has asked that they not be a polling location anymore and they housed two precincts, which was Connersville nine and ten. And we've been able to talk with Fountain Place Apartments, which is just up the street from Eastview, and that would be a good location to have the polling place. We would go ahead with both C nine and ten in Fountain Place. There is one requirement, they need a copy of our liability insurance in the amount of a million dollars. So hopefully we can provide that to be able to use their facility on November fourth. And then the other one is Calvary Baptist Church. They have a daycare center and that posed a problem letting other people come in during the day with the security. They had to hire a guard and that cost them three hundred dollars, which our rent was only about fifty dollars. So they lost money on housing the polling location. So to, we'd like to move Harrison three to Park Central Christian Church or the, what is it, Park?
What's it called now?
Park Place Church, you got it. That's it. It's actually out of Harrison three precinct, but it's only by, across the street. So we, we would pay them fifty dollars to use their facility and hopefully we can do that. And that's what I need, is a motion from you to change these polling locations.
President, I'll move to allow the changes that the county clerk has mentioned.
Good move, and second that we allow Melinda to change the polling places for the two locations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. Also, I wanted to tell you that we're gonna combine boards at six precincts because of the low turnout. We've got, the expo hall has two precincts in it. Well, we have ten people working, well, we're going to combine that to five people and make both precincts with the same board. And there's six locations that we'll be doing that at. If there's an overload, that would be wonderful because that would mean the turnout was high. But with the turnout being only eighteen percent in the primary, I'm looking for a thirty percent turnout in the fall, which that's, I just, it reduces the number of workers that we need to because both precincts have had trouble getting that many workers. Previously, we needed a hundred and twenty-seven, we're now, we'll just need ninety-seven. That'll help save some dollars there too. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is through probation vehicle purchase, Jenna?
Hello.
Whoop, and right, morning. Whole bunch of calls, right?
A whole bunch, yeah. And there's also, I did not make copies, but if you wish to see, there were auto checks done on some of those vehicles, do you wanna go back and look at those? I didn't make copies, but I-
You mean like a car fact?
Yeah. Auto check.
Did you look at it?
Yeah.
Be comfortable with it?
Yeah. I did try to get from quotes on three different dealerships. I got from the main dealerships Ford and Redmond's here in town. Attempted with gross auto sales, but as of this morning, they have not been able to locate a vehicle and get a price quote to me. So I don't know if that's gonna hold me up since I've just got to the main dealerships. I got several quotes from both dealerships for two to three different vehicles. I'm stating that the two thousand twelve Ford Fusion at sixteen thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars is the best deal for what probation's looking for. Basically, we asked for a vehicle mainly to be driven out of town, so I'm looking at good gas mileage. The Ford Fusion has the highest on the highway, which is at thirty-three. We're going to keep the Ford Explorer, that's gonna be for in-town home visits. This vehicle would be for out-of-town trainings. Where the juvenile officers are gonna have to do monthly visits to kids at their placement. We have them everywhere from Wabash, Indiana, Terre Haute, Muncie, Richmond, so they're gonna be doing a lot of traveling. So it has fourteen thousand two hundred and eighteen miles on it. The next in line would be the two thousand twelve Ford Escape. Has lower mileage, but it also has lower miles per gallon and actually costs a little bit more at sixteen thousand eight hundred. They did agree with Ford to do a trade-in value of our van and our Crown Victoria of five hundred dollars. Redmond's offered a six hundred dollar trade-in value. Redmond's, also the top pick from them would be the two thousand thirteen Impala. However, it's got twenty-seven thousand miles on it, it has thirty miles per gallon. It's the lowest cost though at fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty. Of those three, looking at what we need, I, I was saying my top pick was the Ford Fusion with everything combined with that. So kinda want a direction from you guys and asking for a motion to be able to purchase the Ford Fusion. But if there's any one direction you wanna give me, anything else you want me to do, I can certainly do that and come back for the next agenda.
This is one, this is one.
I did not contact Hubler, that would be my other option for a major dealership. I just wanted to stay in Connersville, so I was trying to find three different places in Connersville. Maybe with more time, I could contact some of the other used car dealerships and get a quote from them.
You know, I, I would kinda appreciate if you did it, you know, if, if we're buying a used vehicle.
Right.
We have several used car dealers in town that's been here, been here for years under Red Bull. I'd like to see you-
Get another one.
Yeah, I mean, leave this call and tell them what you want and-
I think it was kind of, by the time I decided that was a time crunch to give gross auto sales, they were just contacted the end of last week, so.
Can we, can we hold out until the next meeting?
Yeah. I'm, I'm anxious to purchase a vehicle, but there's nothing that says that it has to be today. I mean, I wanna get the best deal, so.
Well, we wanna get the best deal, I'm kinda in favor of giving everybody in town.
Okay.
A shot at it, it's good.
Okay. Is that fine by me?
Sugal with the other two.
All right, so go ahead and put me on the next agenda.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is nine eleven interlocal agreement. I think the agreement that we had, had expired.
Yeah, they requested that.
And they, they requested a new agreement. And they requested a new agreement. And what has, what the city has agreed to is a two-year agreement with the city paying $120,000 to the county for their share of the 9/11 expense, $10,000 a month. It seems to be, you know, our fees come out of the telephone fees. The city's coming up with this out of tax dollars, if you want to. At the present time, we're going along, but we don't have an agreement with the city on 9/11. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. For replacement of the generator, is it 50/50? That's a number-
That was in the last agreement.
Number five.
That's the same thing that was in the last agreement.
Is that his?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a monster gen, that's a monster generator in there.
Right.
Okay, so it has to be replaced, we pay half the cost.
Right.
And that's why, you say it's in the way it was prior to-
It was made in the prior agreement.
Okay.
It's always been in there.
Okay.
So then we take the motion to accept or reject that agreement, or put it on hold till next month if you want to. Want to study it out till next month?
I would prefer to, yes.
Okay. We will, we will put that on hold till next, till next month. IT director. No, the next item on is the IT director.
I put that on there based on, are you going to appoint an IT director today?
Yes, we are, that's what we're going to do today. As some of you may know, our IT director, Ben Houston, is resigning effectively the 18th. We have interviewed, interviewed people for this position, and I think we're ready to make an appointment this morning of the new IT director. So I'll entertain a motion to want Mr. King, if that's what you want to do.
I, first of all, as I stated in a couple weeks ago, Mr. King is my cousin, and at that time I refrained from voting, however, I checked the nepotism statutes, grandparents, in-laws, parents, et cetera included, the cousins are not, okay? So I am not making any kind of ethical violation by supporting his nomination. So having said that, I will move to accept Mr. Michael King to replace Mr. Ben Houston, who is leaving.
Second.
Then moving second, we appoint Mr. King as IT director. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
Good luck.
Love them all.
I think you missed congratulations, but good luck to the order, too.
Okay.
I'm still working until tomorrow.
Okay. Next item is community directions, corrections, Michelle Dudley?
I had a part-time staff resign late Friday afternoon, and his last day is going to be this Saturday, so I desperately need to get someone hired. The folder contains the applications of potential hires. I haven't had time to do interviews, the one that's red, got the red flag on it, he will be in tomorrow for an interview. I do plan on offering him the position if he will accept it, and I really need to hire two, yes. I would just like your approval for those persons in the folder for a potential list.
You want our approval for these inherent potentials, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And you've done, obviously, I know the answer to this, but you've done all your homework, backgrounds, and et cetera?
Yes.
Mr. President, given the information that Dudley has provided us, I would move to allow her to consider these applications for the vacant position, community corrections.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Then moving second to allow Michelle Dudley to hire from the list of applications she's provided us, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Also, I gave you the prototype for the ID cards for county employees. If that's okay, is there any other? Michael designed that, so if we need some more information on there, we would need to let him know, we can start getting some of those made.
The only thing I would say is, I don't know how you would do it, is put, if it was an elected official, you'd put their year to term or whatever, or county employees are, I don't know if you'd do one every year, because you don't want to make it just a blank one to where, if they're not here anymore, they can still walk around posing as who they are, I don't know.
We could put an expiration date on easily.
Okay.
You could always ask for it back, too, when they leave.
I, we vote, I, at my department, I've always asked for them back and cut them up.
But we have had a couple employees in the past that would just simply walk off the job, so-
Yes.
I think, and I think asking for them back is something that should be done, but I think an expiration date-
On the back or whatever.
We would just have to plan to reissue them every, when the expiration date comes up, so it just means more supplies, as far as that goes.
The cards, they weren't that expensive, I think the machine came with 500.
I think the machine came with 100, and I think you ordered an extra 200 or something.
Does the machine have memory, or do you have to input each one separately?
It's a Excel spreadsheet, so once it's in there, it's a simple matter of-
Click and press, okay.
It uses a film, so-
It's a printer in its own, it prints the hard plastic like the other ones do, like your driver's license, yeah.
And Michelle, I'm not sure if it's compatible or not, but we've got a huge box of probably 500 that if you can use it, because ours is the one that has to be Scotch-taped every time we print. We've been doing that for years, so I beg your shelter, Michelle.
I'll, I'll look at it, because there may not be.
Remind me.
Because the cards don't seem that special, it's just the size.
I think the refill is like, under $30 for a pack of cards, so it's not a real big expense, and that'll be paid out of my commissary account.
So one card's probably, what, not even a dollar to make it?
Right.
I would, I would guess that.
I would suggest that you just have some kind of an end date on there, and they can be reissued every two, three years, wherever, wherever you feel's appropriate. But I leave that in your hands, as far as I'm concerned.
Do you want us to start getting the information for all offices, or?
What say, we're going to do it, don't we?
Yeah. Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That lines up the move, this, I see Dan Parker is here. You want to address him?
Good morning.
Morning.
I apologize for being late, tied up with the reorders over at the Eagles. They had breakfast. I couldn't say no. I, I'm doing my best to periodically appear before you to give you a report as to what is going on from an economic development standpoint for Connersville and Fayette County. I know it's important to all of you, and certainly is to the community. And at the risk of just reciting or reading the same report that I gave to county council, I'd like to maybe depart from that a little bit, and just give you some information I did give them. We've had some activity here just late. Typically, things come in through site selectors, this is one that didn't. Got a phone call from a former, lack of a better term, big wig in the automotive industry, who has the ties to Connersville, some of my old classmates, and is looking for between 50, 200,000 square feet of industrial space to do some automotive-type sub-assemblies. And the only building that we have on that magnitude is the old D&amp;M building. So I had the person who manages that real estate for the owner come to Connersville yesterday, and we walked it, took a look at it, saw it's state of repair. And so I'm in the process of getting back with that individual. Possible, this is all possible, a couple hundred jobs from the get-go. There's no promises, this is just purely in the early talking stages. But it sounded very good to me, and to the point where I'm willing to let you know in a public manner that there's some movement toward the old D&amp;M building, which would be great, to see that thing back to life. Beyond that, the businesses that I've visited in Connersville, I continue to get good reports from industry that they're at a small scale, increasing their workforce, increasing their, some of them their facilities, their manufacturing space are growing, some of them need more room, which are all good signs that Connersville's going forward, and I'm doing my best to help them with some of their needs. Short of that, that's really all I have to report this morning, unless you would have any questions of me.
Well, we appreciate, I appreciate all the work that you're doing, trying to keep, get people in, it's not easy, but it would be nice to see something, but like, we all understand that everything is, you know, nothing's final until it's final, but we'll see how it turns out. Thanks.
And I think most, most people may not understand that a lot of your work requires confidentiality agreements between prospective businesses and yourself and the board, which is why everything just can't be told. And the other thing is, I don't think you want to extend false hope.
Exactly.
You are, your hands are tied, so to speak, as to what, how much you can tell. So, but we do appreciate the job.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank, Zane, appreciate it. Of course, Barton's in the middle of these armed board, working hard to the same end result, the same goals. So I appreciate your support from commissioners.
Okay. Thank Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Will we go discuss this today, or are we going to take this? Let's go ahead and put it out there if they want to think about it, if they want to let me.
Yeah.
In reviewing, just in going in and reviewing our contractual services that we pay out of county general budget, to date, we paid $28,500 out of county general on the ADA transition plan to strand. And I propose, and am requesting that the commissioners approve an amendment to the capital plan to allow that to be paid out of the county share of edit funds that they use for economic development, and just so that it will spare county general $38,000 for one thing. And the other thing, this was something that, when it was approved, we did not have in the budget for 2014. So it's really putting a crunch on me to find places to pay for other contractual services we had, if we're paying for this, and typically, these types of things, we don't usually pay out of county general. So I went ahead and prepared amendment, if you want to, to the capital plan that you approved on March 4, if you would have, if you agree, or if you want to think about it to the next meeting. And then what I will do, if you agree today, then I will do an additional appropriation request to council to approve that, and then after that is approved, I can, I can move the monies that have been paid out of county general over and pay it out of the appropriation, out of county share of edit.
So the ADA study will be paid for out of edit tax money instead of county general?
Yeah.
That is just supposed to-
We have, I mean, the monies are in there.
We don't have any projects to, well, on the minute, to spend that, spend that money for.
I-
I hate to take it out of edit, but county general was broke, you know?
And this is being paid out of monies that accrued in the county share of edit fund, where we were putting back money, and I don't, this was prior to you, Frank, or Zane coming on, where we were, we were putting in, in the budget every year for, when Carbon Motors was here, there was an agreement to pay part of their utilities for a certain period of time. So we've accrued some monies in there, you know, so-
It's not, it's not appropriate to get there.
Yeah, so we have over 200,000 accrued in that fund, so we wouldn't be hurting that fund, and it wouldn't be any new edit monies, these are, this is edit monies that have come in over a number of years.
Which is appropriate, because we're in the money that's spent on the county situation.
Maybe, I think it's, I think it's a very prudent move to make, so-
I think so.
Ian motion?
Yes, we do.
I move to allow the auditor to move the monies as she sees fit, as she sees fit with contractual services from edit monies, and amend our existing edit plan.
Capital, yes, capital improvement.
Capital improvement plan.
Then moving second, that we approve the request to amend the capital plan to allow to take the money from the ADA plan out of the edit funds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Property concerns, I have a note here that Kevin Luke would like to talk to us.
He's here.
Yeah. I got a problem with flooding, I live in Rusty Acre, Applewood, and the ditch coming around the road is overflowed and washed my driveway completely out, and this has been going on for like eight years.
And where is this in?
Rusty Acre, Applewood, in Everton.
Okay.
And it's washing into my front house, floating my hot tub, and it's washing my neighbor's front room out, and I've called and had them come out, and they dug the ditch out, but they never dug it out deep enough, and mud from the field up above is washing back in, and it's washing the crow and the road out on both sides. And in my driveway, you drive in, there's about an eight-inch ditch, and every time I fill it in, it just washes the rock into my yard.
Kelly, number one, Mr. Luke has talked to me, and I have not gotten out to your house, so I apologize.
I got a picture, if you want.
Explain to them how the field, if I remember right, the field across had stuff removed from it, am I correct, Kelly? from it, am I correct, Kevin?
Yeah. And I don't know how to go back. I don't know how to go.
Still working.
I don't know how to go about getting the right people involved, because a neighbor above drilling this tileless field, and it would help slow the water down that's coming in that ditch. But it's only like three foot off, two foot off the road, and whenever they dug the ditch out, originally years ago, it was tiled in with big rock, and they covered, somebody covered it in before I moved in, and says they want to mow it, and that has created a ditch that's washed all my drive out three or four times.
Jay, can you shed some light on this?
What it is, it's the same problem we're having everywhere, where they plow their waterways up, the water moves so fast, you can't control it. And I've been down there, I was down there when it flooded one day down there, he was down there. It's, it's a problem. I mean, we can keep digging the ditch out until they take care of their waterways, there's nothing we can do with it. We can only, a temporary fix for the problem is all it is. Because we've been down there, and I was down there one day, and he was out in the rain, and I come down there and looked at it, and we tried to cure it, and we dug it out, like you said.
So the farmer has to do something, you're saying?
Yeah. And we're running that everywhere. It's just, I don't know what possessed them, start plowing their waterways out, but they've started doing it for some reason.
But I'm getting dumped on two different ways.
Right.
And it ain't right, because the old tank went down and run down my property into the field where it should, but now it's running across, and it's running into my yard, and it's just flooded my whole yard out. I've got a wood hive, and it's pushing wood out. I mean, 100-pound wood logs, it's washing down in the apple orchard. And I'm losing all my, it's all down the roots, my apple trees, all of those running my apple trees.
Well.
But it really needs, if they come out there and look, the old tank originally went down the road, and it went on down over the hill out of my property. Now it's just running straight across the road into my yard.
Has Mr. Setoff been down there?
I don't know, has Warren been down? I don't, so can he's a racer?
That would be my own suggestion to have.
Well, if one guy did come from a place out there and just looked, but he couldn't really tell me.
From what?
From the water conservation people up there. He just came out and looked and was trying to give me an idea of which way to go, but we don't know.
What I was talking about, Mr. Setoff, is, as our county, if you can get Jake to go down and look at it, see if they could find a solution. As far as the farmer, if that's a problem, I don't know what we could do about that.
Well, you're going to have to replace that road is what's going to happen. I mean, somebody really needs to come out and look, because it's here in the last three months, it's really ate it out bad.
Jay, want to?
I can't even.
You and Setoff, we're going to see if you can take.
I'll see if I can get Warren to go down and look.
Take Cole Vanatta with him. He's the man from the Soul Conservation you probably talked to, right?
Well, I had asked the question a minute ago to Frank, and I don't know the answer to it yet, but with the issue with like a fence on farmer's land, where the county can come in and say, you know, we're going to build it, we're going to pay for it, and then we're going to dock your taxes, can the county do the same thing with tiling farms? Or is that not available?
I think that's what didn't cope.
I don't think so. Or say, why, why don't we get the three of those people to, and see what the problem is, see what the solution to the problem is, and then if we need to go anywhere else, if you talk to Chris and see if they can come up with a solution to it.
That'll work.
Okay?
Yeah. That'll work.
Yeah.
Anyway, try to get it.
Right.
I put thousands of dollars worth of gravel in my driveway, and it's all laid in my yard now, so we're driving in mud. I mean, I know everybody's doing it, but my old driveway's in a mud pit, and my wife's got in the vehicle, and every time she drives in it, we're at the worst.
And this has been the worst year for it that I've seen. I've seen, probably, he had that before, but this year has been worse.
We've got to find out what the solution might be before we decide.
Yeah. Well, I ain't going to find it, as long as somebody tried to help me try to figure it out.
Yeah, well, that's what we're going to do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other patient concerns?
Can you call down the ground and give her your number?
If not, that's all the others we have on agenda. I need to entertain a motion to approve the payroll on the plan.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second to claim that the payroll will be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. This time I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second, this meeting will see the county commission to be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.
Let's do that. We just want to.